Good evening and welcome to the H U U S D. Board meeting for November fifth, twenty twenty five. I'm Ashley Woods, the board chair. We're all here and assembled and we'll get going. Let's call the meeting to order at six oh five, Carol. And do we have anyone public comment in Zoom? Because I don't see anyone here. Okay, if you want to say something, raise your hand if you're virtual. Okay. As we have no public comment, we'll move to approving the agenda. Does someone want to make that motion? JB makes that emotion. Pam seconds. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Okay, we're gonna do the thing we're here to do, which is the big event tonight is inviting Lang to speak with us. This is our potential new board member from Faceton. Oh, yeah. He's got that. So before we grill Langford, I'm gonna read about how this handled the process of having a board member resign and bringing on a new board member. So, so I would like to briefly document the process. The district followed in accordance with Vermont statute in appointing a board member to the school board under VSA sixteen. I shared notice about the vacancy for the Faceton seat via email with the Faceton Select Board within the required five day window. And the position was advertised publicly through multiple channels, including Front Porch Forum, School Communications, and local media. The application period closed on October twenty fourth and one candidate, Langford Davidson, had submitted a letter of interest and a resume. I asked Dr. Mike to send his resume and cover letter to the Faceton Select Board prior to their last meeting, which he did. As required by the statute, I reached out last week to the board chair of that Select Board, Chuck Martell, to see if the board wished to consult. While I do not believe the Select Board chose to take up the matter as a warned agenda item, Chuck Martell confirmed to me that the members received the notice of the vacancy and the information about the sole applicant. Chuck shared that Lang has the respect and confidence of many, including the individual members of the Select Board. And Chuck said that he knows, knew him well, knows him well since he is currently the Chair of the Faceton Planning Commission, where he is dealing with some challenging issues. Lucky, lucky man. With that consultation completed and within the thirty day statutory window to appoint a replacement, closing on November eighth, which is just coming up, the school board is in a position to act on the appointment this evening if we pass that. So that's how it all came to be in the last couple of weeks. And the first thing we want to do is hear from you, Lang. Why, why are you doing this to yourself? No, I'm kidding. And then we'll see if the board has some questions for you. Go ahead.
Why do I do it? So I have two children in the, in the Faceton Elementary School. My son Logan is in third grade and my daughter London who's in first grade. I'm deeply involved in this school and when news of the vacancy was there, I was asked by several members of the community and the PTO if I would consider taking the seat and I responded that I would because I'm always willing to help out. I've attended the last three meetings as well as JB's other meeting on buildings, facilities. And I think that this is, I could really make effective help and gain perspective and I joined the school board. And I think it's something I could really get into and I feel like I have the space on my plate to make that happen.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Lang? Come on, Rebecca, come on. Let's make it interesting.
Do you have a favorite color?
Do you like the color green?
Yeah, I guess we don't have any other questions. So yes, you can make a motion. Or wait a minute, would anyone else? JB would like to make that motion. Do you want to make that second? Yeah, he pre-gamed the getting to make the motion.
I would be happy to make the motion for Lang Davidson to take the Faceton, empty vacant Faceton seat on the school board.
Second, second from Rebecca. All those in favor of the appointment, say aye, aye. Yeah, there any abstentions? Nope, okay. All right, yeah. Turn your mic on.
Read your resume and your reasons for being here and I thought, this is great. And we, now we could have sort of a liaison with the Planning Commission and, you know, all kinds of great things. So I'm thrilled that you agreed to join us.
Vote of confidence.
Yeah, so I've known Lang for years now, met through, through work or my, my work at the time. And the last couple of years, I've gotten Langford a lot more. His, his interest in learning more, whether it's about Planning Commission matters in Faceton or the Greater Valley, or understanding more about the school board, the intricacies of how it's working. You know, the committee, the Building Use and Visioning Committee is, you know, he's always there. We've had many closed door conversations. He's always willing to learn more, understand people's viewpoints and perspectives. And so I just think he'd be a fantastic addition. So when I heard he was interested, I certainly pushed him along in this. I think it's great for the town of Faceton to have a voice at this table, aside from Rebecca, but have somebody, have somebody who has children in the school, especially with all this going on. So, yeah, welcome. I think, I don't think they'd be a better candidate.
So we'd love for you to take a seat at the table and join us for our meeting, but you can't vote on anything because tomorrow you gotta go get sworn in at the Faceton Town Hall. Okay. We did, all those in favor, we didn't even... I think that seat is... Yeah. You do. You only fulfill this year of that spot and then you have to run again.
For the rest of that.
Yeah, for the remaining week. Okay, well, that was really quick and easy. The next is board reports. I, I'll start by talking a little bit about the leadership report that I emailed to everyone directly rather than just link it in the, in the agenda. And the reason is while we were at our very cool VSBA conference this week, we conferenced a bit about the leadership report and using it better and having it go more in depth into things that we want to talk about because we're, and stop just using it for reminders. So every other week we'll go in deep on something and on the opposite weeks we'll give the reminders and maybe update those reminders or talk about something that's current in that sort of realm of rules and whatnot. So I hope, if you haven't read it, and I will send it to you guys because it's important. I'm sorry, I didn't, actually, they're not on Send Group, right? That's a, I have a different, or maybe they are. I sent it to Send Harwood. But basically for Langford and you guys, we're asking, Cindy and I are very curious about what people feel strongly about going into budget season. It's really about priorities of what we're, want to hold on to, what we're not willing to give up and what we're willing to fight about. So please read it and write something and give it to us prior to the next meeting. We really want to use those comments to create a really strong dialogue that we can have on the night that Lisa gives us the first rundown on the budget. It's gonna help us prioritize better if we know what everyone else, what all of this group is really thinking about, rather than imagining what that is and, and trying to come from a collective voice. So do your homework is what I'm asking. And the students have a report. Oh, sure, go ahead, Emily. Questions, of course.
Is our homework due before the next meeting in the time to get in before the agenda? Or is it just before the meeting?
You know, we, it's just before the meeting because we're not making an official document out of that or anything. We're just gonna take those collective ideas and discuss them in this group because I'm sure some will, will mimic each other, some, you know, there'll be commonalities, there'll be lots of things that we can talk about. But knowing people's, you know, not personal agendas, but really your personal priorities here. We all have them. What, what's driving us nuts? Let's make sure we all talk about that. All right, students, let's hear it.
All right, so this is the student report for this meeting. Next slide. All right, so we got a couple of things going on in the building today, or this past month. Fall sports playoffs just ended. Field hockey got out in the first round, unfortunately. Volleyball and boy soccer both got out in the semifinals. Girls soccer lost in the championship. My personal opinion, the refs were rigged, but that's, yeah, yeah. Harwood scored multiple times and then the refs always called that it wasn't a goal. They actually let the game end and then they went back and said the, not important. And then, yeah, yeah, it was... Yeah. Yeah, they're right. It was bogus game. I will say for a game in Burlington, there was an incredible amount of students there showing support. I want to say there was like around, were you at, you were at the game? I want to say there was almost like two hundred students. Like there was so many more Harwood students than Rice students. It was...
There was like four sections of like bleachers and three of the four sections were Harwood. Rice just had one very small little, little pocket.
Yeah, it was, it was a pretty rowdy game for our side of the, the stands. But we were all very, like it was a very supportive show from Harwood. And even though we did not win, our girls still made it to the championship. So that's like, yeah. And then Gulf won states. Everybody, all, all the teams did really well this year. So round of applause for them. Onto things going on in the building. Morning announcements are back at Harwood. They had gone away for a year or two because of shifts up in the schedule. But some morning announcements happen at about eight forty every morning. Me and four other students alternate who is speaking and you're always speaking pairs. It's, it's, hold on, bring the doc up. I'll, I'll get today's announcement. Good morning, Harwood. Today is a black day. The weather today is raining with a high of forty-three and a low of thirty-four. Today is National Donut Day, but lunch today is fajitas. Starting today, there will be two bells during the lunch block to help students and staff know when students should be in class and when they're released for lunch. Eleven fifty-five for the start of class after lunch one and twelve thirty-five to release from class for lunch two. The Thanksgiving food drive will be ending on Friday right after TA. So far, the freshmen are winning with eight items and the seniors are in last place with zero. So donate. Please help families in need to have a Thanksgiving meal in our Harwood Food pantry. The first place winner will earn a hundred, three hundred and fifty spirit points. Now for the joke of the day. What is an astronaut's favorite part of a computer? The space bar. Have a great day, Harwood. So every day, it's, what type of day is Gold Day, Black Day? That's the schedule for the day. The weather, what national day it is. There's Donut Day. Yesterday was Community Service Day. There was National Make a Dog's Day, day where you're supposed to go to a shelter and play with puppies. But the person who read it at the time thought it was a typo and said National Hot Dog Day. Make sure to go play with some dogs. And then says what the lunches for the day, any club announcements, any school events, any sports happening. So during the sports season, you'd say what games are going on, joke, and then just have a great day. Other things on Friday, Senator Welch will be here for, what? Yeah, for the lunch, talking about sustainability at Harwood and our food program, farm to school, all that kind of important stuff. And then on the eighteenth, there will be Harwood's Semiannual Blood Drive, put on by Student Gov. It's gonna be happening in the gym and... We are at the point where we are looking for community members to donate. We've already gone to the students and then the staff. So if anybody wants to donate blood, especially Power Red where they take a little bit more, but it's a lot more useful. Yeah, yeah.
So Power Red is basically you're in the chair for like an hour and it's usually for men because women have denser bones. So they, men can give more blood in a short amount of time. That's what the research says. But we're still looking for a ton of Power Red donors and a few non-Power Red donors.
Next slide. All right, so on maybe October ninth, the seniors had Mountain Day, which is when all the other grades are volunteering around the community, the seniors go to Mad River and we climb or gondola up, not gondola, chairlift up the mountain. And it was amazing because I rode my first chairlift. So lots of fun. But we go up the mountain and then we come down and then downstairs at the bottom of the mountain waiting for us is all the food people were instructed to bring. So then we have a little party. It was very fun. It's true. It's true. I am in one of those pictures. Very cold though. You can see on the picture, I took all these pictures. I'm very proud of them. The picture of the guy on the chairlift, he, he was, it was a very chilly day, but it was a very fun experience and it's a good Harwood tradition.
Hey, thank you.
Are there any questions about what's going on in Harwood?
So if you have an important thing, piece of information to get out to students, it's you guys who are gonna get the first line to get a piece of information out in the morning.
Yeah, if, if they, if they listen to you. Yeah, we are, the morning announcements was started up by Student Gov. Emma and I are co-presidents along with Rona Chalmers, who is not on the school board. But yeah, we are the people who you should get to if you want to...
Nice. I know Rona. I did, I entered, did the job interview thing with her a couple of years ago. Yeah, no doubt. Okay, any other questions for the students? Okay, thanks, guys. Dr. Mike did not have an official report this time, right? But does anyone have any questions for Dr. Mike about anything? Moving right along. Okay, Steve, you want to give us a little update from Public Outreach? We blasted on that survey, everybody. Seven hundred and twenty-five respondents. Which is amazing.
Yeah, I mean, we got so many responses that a community member who works in marketing asked if he thought maybe that people had sent in lots of duplicate entries, they kind of rigged the poll. But I mean, I've gone through seven hundred and twenty entries on a couple of questions and I don't see evidence of that. So I think really people are just very, very interested in this topic. When we did our budget survey about six months ago, we got two hundred plus responses. Now we have seven hundred. I talked a little bit about the key takeaways and, you know, we're just trying to get the final form of the report ready. Just a lot of data to work through and I want to thank Bobby, Rob, Cindy, and Shannon Riston for helping with this. It's a big job.
I need to apologize to Bobby for throwing a temper tantrum the other day.
Okay, I think the apology is accepted. So again, the key takeaway I think is that the community is deeply skeptical that consolidation will result either in improved education for the kids or significant cost savings. And I mean, this really came home on the question where we asked, what are the advantages of consolidation? Half the people said, nope, you know, no, there are no, no overriding advantages. A few issues that came up repeatedly are unsustainable increases in property taxes, no surprise, lack of state funding for construction maintenance costs. People are very worried about increased transportation times and also loss of local control if we merge into a large district. You know, we'll, we'll have a copy of the report ready pretty soon, I hope. It'll be available, of course, to everybody, to the public. And the next task is I guess for Cindy and Ashley to work on this to get their presentation ready for the task force, the eleventh.
Ten. I sent you my draft.
Boy. Okay, so if you have any questions about the, the report, I'm, I'm happy to discuss it.
I want to second the thanking of these boards who have put in even quantitative time into this project and really they're, just to not rely fully on a chatbot, but to have people really take a look and read every comment, it made a big difference. And it's impactful. I mean, if you haven't read it, it's, people were really nervous and worried. And we, and the real story is about those seven hundred and something people. That's a lot. And they were all very different. I didn't find it to sound cheaty at all, but I suppose that could be. Any other, any questions for Steve? Go ahead, Cindy.
First off, I'd like to start with a special thank you from all of us to Steve. It is an enormous amount of work that he's done, not only trying to collate and manage some of this enormous amount of data, but managing, what, six of us, five of us editing stuff, writing stuff. That goes to Steve. That goes to Steve. And then his responses have been really helpful. And so it's, it's kind of complex to really try and manage five different additions of the same, of the same material, essentially. Anyways, it's just been terrific, Steve. You've been really something else. And to the others who spent a lot of time, I know Bobby spent a lot of time on her stuff. And I think the rest of us spent a large amount of time also. So it's, it's been a good process, a good process. Thank you, Outreach Committee.
My microphone's not working, but I did want to add my thanks to the board members and make sure the community fully understands that, how impressive it is that we had, number one, that many responses. That's wonderful for our community. But the fact that, you know, Cindy and Bobby and Rob and Steve are not just scanning it, but literally reading every single comment that was made. That's how you understand the, the spirit and the intent of community surveys. And I think that's just remarkable and I don't think every board would have people committed to doing that and reading every single response and absorbing it. So that, we understand why it's taking a little longer than you projected, but I still think that's good timing.
And it was interesting learning to use AI, which actually turns out to be fairly simple to get started with. But then you have to really hone in and clarify what your questions are. And there was some confusion on one question having to do with, did specifically, did people say no? And, but they didn't always say no, not for redistricting and use those words. But there was intent, I mean, emotional intent. And I was impressed with what you can do with AI. On the other hand, I also see a lot of cautions with it and I look forward to our presentation on AI because I could see some of the pitfalls. But, but it was an interesting process.
Thanks, Bobby. Okay, moving on to our next item, if unless anyone else has any more comments on that. No? Okay, next, we are going to have our discussion and an enrollment presentation to start, followed by Education Funding Formula presentation from Lisa. Enrollment?
All right. Cindy's in the tech zone. My mic's pulling that up. Okay. So we wanted to be able to share enrollment trends and how we started enrollment trends is, is looking at birth rates. Looking at birth rates in Vermont, Vermont had the fewest birth rates in fiscal year twenty-four across the nation, across the United States. In fiscal year twenty-four, we had five thousand twenty-six births. And in fiscal year twenty-three, we had five thousand sixty-three births in the state of Vermont. In Washington County alone, we had four hundred and eighty-two births in fiscal year twenty-three. That's, and within Washington County, there's approximately, I would confirm my number, but it's seven districts. That's less than seventy students per district on average.
And when you think, there, there was a time that I can remember where we had a hundred and twenty-five in a graduating class at Harwood. And I'm sure years ago, there was many more. When you do the math, it is... We, we hear this all the time and this has been some of the conversation when I was on the commission. It's been the conversation in the legislature about our declining enrollment in population, but it's very real. And I do want to add, part of the reason we did this is, as we've been examining as administration and the administrative team, the, the enrollment data, the pre-K numbers that we are starting to see are, are starting to cause us alarm for the numbers that we'll be seeing in the next two, three years. But long term, what that impact has on our school district. And again, this has been discussed statewide, but we are now seeing it after a couple of years of a, of a bump post-COVID, when we had a lot of people move to our, to the valley. We're starting to see that decline again.
So as I mentioned, Vermont is ten percent below the national average. You can see in the northeast, it's pretty much very low and the highest was actually in Utah. The average across the United States is twenty-seven percent and our birth rate was seventeen percent. And it's been consistent for the last four years, the lowest across the nation. Why are birth rates important today? Because it is our future enrollments. Fewer births means fewer students, fewer enrollments. And five years from now, that's kindergarten, when they start entering kindergarten. So it's important that we're watching that and we're monitoring those birth rates. Declining enrollments also affect our cost per pupil. Increases go up with declining enrollments. And that's key, especially when we are so close to our excess threshold. We're only four hundred and eighty-two dollars away from our cost per pupil threshold. And remember, once we exceed that cost per pupil threshold, we're taxed for, every one dollar over, we're taxed two dollars. So that's very important to keep in mind as our enrollments are going down. It's an important question across, to look at enrollments because it has directing implications, district budgeting, staffing, facility use. So it's important to look at this as a package, as an entirety. Again, enrollments predict, enrollments predict our populations for elementary and secondary. And this is not a temporary issue. This is a structural issue. If we're seeing consistent birth declines and enrollment declines, this is a structural issue we'll need to be looking at and to start planning for the future and how we address that. Next slide. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly because we also have another presentation after this. But again, declining enrollments impact class sizes, staffing, and resources across all of our schools. Planning resources and planning for these enrollment drops are key in terms of resource allocations and how we gather the data and how we then plan and project for the future within our budgeting for the next three to five years. What do we do? How do we look at this with this data? And then identifying those early demographic shifts and then to be able to plan with those, with that data. Next slide.
So this is where we start to get into some of our own enrollment for pre-K. We shared the report that I know the board looked at at the last meeting. And we do want to kind of start to do a little bit of a deeper dive and then look for your questions about pre-K. Not every state has a pre-K program, and I do want to remind us that the, you know, Act 166 provides for a certain amount of pre-K for our, for families, not necessarily in schools. Not all schools and not all districts have their own pre-K program. Harwood made a commitment years ago to have that program, and I think it's a good piece. There is an expense that goes along with it that Lisa and I will talk a little bit further, but the number of hours provided for us, students in most schools attend two days a week. So two, two full school days, so it's not full-time, which means a lot of families who have needs, childcare needs, have to back that guarantee and that funding with another program that provides childcare for the other half. The Warren School has had a program that's been very effective in the community that's a half-day. So they receive about the same amount, approximately the same amount of hours. It's a little different than the other schools, but it's half-day. And then they've partnered with a community organization to provide childcare in the building, the other half. So it's very effective for parents in that community. It's a good model, but it requires a provider. The other piece I will say from the educational side is, I think, the general public does not understand the regulatory requirements for pre-K, that our principals, when you ask what, you know, what are the different things that fill a principal's time? If you have a pre-K program in your building, it's considerable compliance time and regulatory time. Pre-K is not regulated by the Agency of Education. It's regulated by the Department of Children and Family with all kinds of federal regulations that go along, and it's far more restrictive than what we are used to with Agency of Education. So it takes a lot of time. So you will see in our numbers, some families are able to move their children to other buildings. Moretown traditionally has had a lot of, a lot of students. We also are able to receive students from other school districts that then must return to their school district for kindergarten. So that's what makes those numbers a little confusing sometimes, and it's also why we are careful to show our K to 12 enrollment and then as a component of that, pre-K since they're not full-time. Lisa, what else did I miss here? Granville, another piece is we've always tried to be attractive to Granville. And Granville is a school district that does not have a school, so they tuition their children to, they generally go in three different directions. We receive some of the students from Granville who live generally in the more northern regional area. But it's important for us to attract those students in pre-K because they often stay for kindergarten through high school. So that's an important attraction because we receive, I can't remember offhand, but it was, it's in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars in tuition from, from that town.
Over 400, 548,000 that we receive.
You can tell who's the number person. She has, she has the exact numbers. I have the ballparks.
Question, so you said what Warren has in terms of pre-K and then the after-school program or after-pre-K program. What do the other schools have? Because whether or not we can recruit and have kids in pre-K, if they've been born, really depends on that whole piece of childcare. So like, what does Waitsfield and Faceton and Moretown and Brookside do?
The, the schools don't do anything. It's, it's community partners, so students in those schools will go to other programs. You know, for example, in Waitsfield, Spring Hill is a, has a wonderful program. A lot of students attend there. Neck of the, Neck of the Woods is another one that a lot of students attend, but the school doesn't run the program in Warren. It's a cooperative effort with the community.
Build have something similar? Open Hearth? They no longer do that? Does Faceton have something similar?
The only school that has something in the school is Warren. They've, they've moved to, yeah.
As to deal with Hunger Mountain Childcare, they do the preschool in the morning and the kids stay there for the afternoons.
But another question I received, and Dan had mentioned that he'd shared some questions, and I think we tried to address most of them. Another question that we received that Dan had asked was, just a reminder about pre-K numbers at Waitsfield this year. If you remember, at the end of last year, amidst all the other budget changes we made as, as the administrative team, we looked in the Valley at our student populations, and we were at a very low number in Waitsfield that did not warrant the cost of running a class. So we closed that class. We offered, we had capacity at Faceton and in Warren. So we offered those families the ability to go to one of those programs. And unfortunately, in checking with KIA, most of those families chose other options because they needed that childcare. So we, we lost those, that's why it's important to have a program because we ended up losing those students to other, other programs. So the money went elsewhere.
So just where you see, we have 196 students, PK3 and PK4 in the current fiscal year. That also includes Act 166 students. Right now, we have 66 of those students that we pay to, to private providers. And this year's current budget is about 280,000 that we pay to private providers. But that count of 196, we include that. That's part of our headcount. So we, we always track those, whether it's PK3, PK4, because PK4 becomes kindergarteners. So we're always tracking. Next slide. So as you see, I've provided enrollments over the years, and I've broken out, you know, who attends our school and actually who go, who we pay for to go through Act 166 with many of the outside providers. But you can see from fiscal year 20 down to current fiscal year, our trend has been, we're now down below 200. Next slide.
And I also want to point out too, I had mentioned that we are not running a program at Waitsfield. So when we talk about a program, one teacher sees two sessions. So there's two sections per class teacher. We currently have three. We have a full-time teacher and a part-time teacher at Moretown. We have a full-time teacher at Faceton, and we have a full-time teacher at Warren. So we have seven sessions. Looking ahead to the Valley to next year, we are projecting that we will only have numbers for, at this time, and that's why we're doing a lot of publicity to make sure we're finding everyone. At this point, we're seeing five sessions. So we're going to have to make, we're, we're having conversations. We haven't come to conclusions yet, what our recommendations are, but we're having conversations on what that can look like, not just for next year, but we also want to look in future years to see what the impact would be. Because what we don't want to have happen is, you know, to, to close one class down for a year like we had to do at Waitsfield and then need that back next year. So we want to look at a model that's sustainable, particularly in the Valley schools. Just because of the population numbers at Brookside, which is a much larger school, we are able to maintain somewhat of a consistent numbers in that building.
So I just also put up this weights. If you recall, our, as of Act, as of fiscal year 25, our weights changed in what a PK is actually weighted at in our school. So it's less than one. So that counts towards when we're looking at our budget and our weighted and our cost per pupil. So it actually, we get deducted, instead of one, it's counted as minus point, it's kind of less. It's minus point 54 that you deduct off the, the actual 1.0. So in looking.
Can I ask what the effect of that is?
Go ahead, Steve.
Can I ask what the effect of having a less than one weight means? Would it make it harder for us to?
Well, at least we'll get to the specifics, but just also as a reminder, they're only part-time. So, so, so if you would receive a full weight for a student that's only part-time, then you would be receiving more money than is necessary. But, but I, getting to that next part, Lisa can go on that. But what I said as we were preparing this, you know, the superintendent, the idea person. So Lisa, I'd love to be able to give the numbers, specifically what we're receiving in revenue, specifically what we're paying. But the expenditures is very easy, but anyone, any board member, and I know, again, I'll, I'll single out Dan, who's kind of done a deep dive into weights and how that translates to our budget. Let me just say, Lisa probably spent, probably a full day of work trying to answer my one question to do a deep dive into that with the Agency of Education.
Through that slide in there because I want to be able to say it's not easy figuring out the revenue of what we receive out of educational spend that is applied towards PK students. It also costs less in terms of education for PK. So it's not a full, it's not a five-day program. It costs less. So, next slide, actually, what I wanted to be able to do is, as Mike said, pulling up the expenses of what, what we actually spent over the years. And you can see from fiscal year 23 through 25, it was between 1.5. In fiscal year 26, we're expected to spend $1.6 million. That's budget. That's not actual. So that's what our projection is. So in look. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. So yes, so just to, as I mentioned earlier, we're projected to spend 280,000 to private PK students. So 66 students in our count of 196, we pay 280,000 to go to some of the private schools. Spring Hill, Neck of the Woods, there's a whole host of, that we pay for. And each one of those private tuitions costs almost $4,000, $3,892, $3,982. And year over year, it's been an increase of 2.5% that it's increased. Now, it was interesting because I wanted to be able to figure out how the state comes up with that allocation. And of course, I've not gotten an answer yet, and I've not gotten a straight answer. Because when you take that number and you compare it to what it costs us, there's a big, vast difference. So going to the next page, looking at what our costs are versus our revenue. So when I pull up and look at, sure.
Jonathan, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I want to, can we go back to that last chart, graph page? On the, on the sped professional services, we got 4,400, we got 9,100, $403, and then 35,000. What happened there?
Well, it depends every year of a student entering in our school system and any special services that are needed. And that's very difficult to plan and project.
Right.
But in this instance, we knew of some students that were having some needs, so we budgeted some dollars there.
I see.
Many principals have early evaluations of some students. And that if we know ahead of time, I can budget, and in this instance, this year, we did, so we ended up budgeting for that.
I got you. Thank you.
And great question, Jonathan. I'll look to John Berliner, who's here as well, because John, not just pre-K, but all other levels, he carefully tracks what needs are, and then he and Lisa spend a lot of time so that when we're putting numbers in budgets, it's, it's projected on what we think is actually going to happen with, with John's expertise of services that are needed.
All right, Mike, thank you.
The only other thing I would add is while pre-K money through Act 166 is for the 10 hours a week, special education services for preschool students is not, is not limited to that too. So we have to assess the needs of the student in preschool and meet those needs the same way we would for any other student. So it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison all the time there in terms of the amount of time.
Thank you. Can I also ask, in the, as far as benefits go, does that include the healthcare?
It includes all benefits, healthcare, HRAs, retirement, workers' comp. So that's everything that we pay for, for an employee.
Right. I just wondered if the, if what we're, if the rise in that, in that is relating to the healthcare issues.
But you mean the benefits. So this is staff benefits. This is, those benefits are for staff salaries and the healthcare associated with those staff salaries, those.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. And I was just wondering if, if, if the rise in that from 22, I mean, 23 to now, is, like, can we track what benefits have gone up? That's.
Yes, yes.
You know, they've gone up almost over $100,000.
Yep.
What, what is the main driver of that increase?
So remember, if you recall, it was an increase this year of 12%. So that was health benefits alone went up 12%.
Right. That's what I'm asking is like, what, like, how much of that increase from fiscal '23 is, is caused by the healthcare costs rising? I'm imagining it's probably a good portion of it.
Yes. It was the healthcare, a slight increase in dental and slight increase in the HRA costs, and then a slight increase in workers' comp. So, yes.
Yep. Okay, thank you. That's great news for everybody.
Thanks, Jonathan. Good questions. Bobby, go ahead.
Just wanted to go back to Steve's question about the pupil count because I don't, I just want to, going back to our budget discussions before, and this would be for the benefit of new board members as well. The per pupil count, so if, so the lower our pupil count, the higher our, it, it works with the, I'm not expressing myself well, but that means that we get, it doesn't, we don't have as many pupils counting, but doesn't that affect the budget increase? So that we, it brings us closer to our cap? And maybe just, I want to, I think that's what I'm asking now, maybe just a clarification of that.
So there's, with the per pupil, you want to look at the ADM, which is the average daily membership. And then you want to look at the LTW ADM, which is the long-term average daily membership. And then what you need to do is you either add or deduct weights based on the category. So if you recall, the PK students are, you would, you'd have to deduct point 54 off of each ADM. And so in figuring out the revenue that we received for, out of the educational spend for PK students, what I had to do is go look at the average daily count for fiscal year '26, and it was 205. And then we ended up having, I had to deduct the weight for those 204, 204 students to get then what the true FTE count is of that PK. And then I had to add back in sparsity, English language learner weight. So it, it wasn't an easy calculation, but I got to as close as I could to be able to figure that out. And in looking at that, looking at the revenue, we do receive, if you see in fiscal year '26, for early education aid, we receive 191,910. Sorry, next slide. And then if you look at our educational spend, out of the big number that we get of over $40 million, I had to back out the average daily membership and the weights, and then put that in and look at the difference of what I would have gotten versus the lower pupil counts for PK. And the difference ended up being. And the difference ended up being, um, one point four million dollars. So then I take that and I divide that by the average daily membership to get what my cost per pupil for PK is. And that came out to eight thousand dollars, eight thousand sixty-four dollars. So that's what I received, well, projected receive in fiscal year twenty-six out of our educational spend that could be attributed towards PK students. And my budgeted expenses for fiscal year twenty-six are basically eight thousand. So we're breaking even, but those are budgeted expenses. We don't know what, what it'll be at the end of the fiscal year. Um, if you look at fiscal year twenty-five, we actually were at a loss for our PK. So we received seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars with the methodology that I used. And I actually passed this through the state and made sure that my thinking was correct. And they said, yes, you're pretty much in line with it. It's not exact, but it's pretty close. Um, but we actually spent seven thousand, so we were at a net loss just looking at that cohort of PK students of more than sixty thousand dollars. And if you compare that, so we, in fiscal year twenty-five, we actually spent seven thousand dollars, um, on a student. And that also included, um, I think last year we did two hundred and forty-eight thousand in terms of those one, Act one sixty, yeah, two hundred and forty-eight thousand in fiscal year twenty-five to private, and in fiscal year twenty-six, we're projected to do two hundred and eighty thousand. So, um, but that was what we're spending and we're sending out to private schools. Last year was three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. This year it's three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. So in looking at this, again, you're comparing budget fiscal year twenty-six to actuals. That number could change at the end of the year when we look at our actual expenses for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, and what, what I'm talking about actuals are salaries and our benefits won't change. Um, but it could, anything depending on if we spend more on special ed or something else, the below-the-line expenses, below-the-line means anything above salaries and benefits, those numbers could change, and often they do change, especially under special ed.
And the other variable for those who've looked at teacher salaries is, you know, the, the experience of the teacher. So if we have a teacher who's at the, you know, it's, uh, you know, master's plus additional credits, who's at the higher end of experience, uh, if, if someone at that higher end retires and we hire a new person, that's going to impact those expenses. So that varies. But the other piece I wanted to point out is even with pre-K, we talked about this with other schools, but, uh, just to remind everyone that we're a public school. So even with pre-K, if a student walks through our door, we say, we welcome students with open arms and, and accept every student and work with every student regardless of their challenges or the disability or the cost. Private providers are still, even with pre-K, are able to say, we cannot service you. So that is another piece that we usually get the students who, who have those higher needs.
I wish, well, a question for John. Um, you had talked about, and Mike, you were saying it, but when a pre-K kiddo has some sort of special needs and we're, um, we can give them more than the ten hours or more services than that. Have you been successful with matching kids with the services that they need? One, in our schools, and then also being able to make that work in further away placement?
It depends. Um, we are not in a position right now to, uh, I'll start at the end of your question, sort of working my way back. Um, we're not in a position right now to be able to send our staff out to district residents who are in a private preschool outside of our district. We'd love to, but that is just not something we have the, the resources for right now. We do have some of our provider, or some of our school staff go push in into, um, some of the preschools in our district that have, uh, you know, a significant number of students, just because, um, we can be efficient with that. We do also offer, even if a student is at Hunger Mountain or Neck of the Woods, um, we can offer for, if the parent's able to come into, um, one of our schools to get services too, depending on what they are, what their needs are. We are able to meet most of the needs of our preschool students with special needs. Um, there's always going to be some outliers for low incidence disabilities, which is honestly not very much different, um, at a preschool level than it is at a, um, K through, through twelve level. And we, we have some excellent, what now is called ECSE, Early Childhood Special Education is the acronym now. Some of you may have known it as triple E in the past. Um, uh, we have some excellent folks here in our district to provide those services.
All right, diving deep, Lisa. Um, the, and the last slide that you just had up, the revenue per pupil is going up significantly in FY twenty-six. From my understanding, does that imply that we have a lot of English as a second language students in PK? That was driving that? Is? So that'll follow through for the next twelve years presumably?
Include that, but I can actually include the adjustments for that. So there, I went through the adjustments and went through it, and so there, we, we got weight added back because of those additional categories. So, um, that helped.
Just, Dan, just to point one thing out, so the determination of if a student qualifies under, um, English language learner i- is, is based on the standardized assessment. So just because a student qualifies, uh, when they're younger, doesn't mean that that will necessarily continue as a designation. Oftentimes, as students, um, are immersed more in English and receive services through that, they, um, no longer qualify later on in school. So it's, it's, it is not something that, um, once has been determined, will continue necessarily all the way through.
Really be preparation required on the school's front is probably a temporary.
I would say possibly, because it, it, it doesn't mean anything either way. There are some students who, for whatever reason, do continue to qualify, but it's not inevitable.
This is more of a statement, but, and maybe it's neither here nor there, but being on the board of Neck of the Woods, uh, we did just approve the expansion for the second floor. So there'll be additional fifty slots. And I'm curious as to what, if any, impact that might have, given the declining enrollment, that there will be more spots for pre-K kids beginning next year. So just something to keep in mind in, in the forecasting.
So, um, just really quick, Dan's asked your question. I did add back for, um, economically disadvantaged, we were able to add back, um, pupils, um, and English language learners, and then sparsity to our PK. So that bumped our number back up.
And the other question we're still working on that, as Lisa and I were talking through this, is there is a childcare tax now that supports this. So one of the questions that we're, that I wonder, that we're trying to get an answer on, is how does that impact the education fund? Are these expenses coming from that revenue source, which is through a payroll tax? Or are these expense, are these, is this revenue coming from our property tax? Again, that's, we're, we're just trying to fully understand that as numbers and finances get tighter. So that's, that's an open question for us.
Jake Feldman. So I actually emailed Jake just to find, because I think it falls under other revenue, but isn't specifically state, so I'm waiting to hear an email back from Jake and Brad as well. Um, so next page, does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, next page. Um, what I just did is be able, dating back to fiscal year twenty-two, um, I did a five-year enrollment snapshot by, um, grade level. Um, and you can see where in fiscal year twenty-two, our enrollments were eighteen thirty-eight, and this year we're, we're at seventeen eighty-seven, including pre-K. Um, so it, it's very close to the projection that I actually, um, projected last year in my annual budget presentation. It's only five off, it was actually projected seventeen ninety-two, so we're pretty close. So on average, uh, well, next slide.
Also, I, I have the, I have Dan's list of questions on another slide with some other documents. So I'll have to close the presentation to make sure I get everything, but one of the other questions was, uh, related to, um, uh, you, you want to, you have weights? Yeah, the weights, do you want to?
For the weights, do you have a question? Well, weights, we did not have, um, head counts in Weathfield this year. Because of the enrollments, we did not have PK, and then we, um-
Oh, I, I thought you meant the, the weights on the, the question with, um, early college. No, you, that, that's the one I want her to do. Because we, we went back and forth on that, we were a little confused about that.
Right, so the early, uh, uh, college is, they're not counted as our ADM unless we exceed that five percent threshold. If they, we exceed that five percent threshold, then they add it for twelfth graders, then they add that phantom number back to us, so then we're held harmless.
That's why I made, that's why I asked her to answer it. Um, oh.
Hey, Dan.
I'll, I'll maybe rephrase it in a, in a form of a question, I guess, but, um, so what happens is, uh, the state says if you go more than five percent of your senior class leaves for early college, you're not going to get penalized for that beyond the first five students. So effectively for us, that's five, because we have about a hundred students per class. So beyond five, it doesn't cost the district anything to use the early college program.
Harmless. For the first five, right.
Except what, what I would say with, so, so my, my cards, I, I'm not, I'm not very, uh, I, I don't hide my feelings on the state paying for early education. Dual enrollment, dual enrollment is entitlement, so you, any student can attend a college while in high school. My challenge is, it, it, we, we have programs that we've added, and we've added that do still take money from the education fund. And in our case, it also takes students out of our classrooms, which makes it more difficult for us to provide a, uh, robust offering for students. So that's, that's another piece. And one of my personal issues with early college is a lot of the students who take advantage of it are students who are sitting at home in their living room doing it online. So it's, I, I question how robust of an experience it is. Again, that's my personal opinion, uh, based on what I've seen, but, but that is, that is a challenge, and it is one of those programs that we add that even though we're held harmless after five, there's still a cost to the state for that program.
Um, just to make you feel a little bit better, Dr. Mike, uh, my daughter did do the early college, and she did attend on-campus classes for the entire year. Um, so she did not, she did not get to do any, I don't think she had any remote. There, no, there was not any, any remote classes, so.
There are some programs like that, and they're the programs that I prefer from, you know, as an educator.
Might want to do something with education one day.
Next slide, Mike. So I also wanted to, um, share a comparison for a two-year enrollment snapshot by school. Um, I broke out private three K, um, PK three and PK four in the private column, and then you'll also see who is attending in each of our schools. But this is an average over two years. So you'll, you know, la- this year, we actually compared to fiscal year twenty-five, we lost twenty-nine students. And looking forward, projecting for the next several years, we are going to be estimating anywhere from fifteen to twenty students, um, based on enroll, um, projections for birth rates, um, at, for a reduction in our enrollments moving forward. Next slide. Uh, just year-over-year enrollment, um, you'll see comparison, comparing, um, the previous year, and you'll see where during COVID, we had a slight uptick, and that's where we were staying steady for a couple of years, but now we're starting to see and match our, our trend that has been forecasted. Next slide. This is just the detail, we can actually go to the next slide.
This is linked, so you're welcome to take a look at any point. I think we have it linked, don't we?
Yeah, we, we have it linked. Um, you can even go to the, go to the next slide for the grade bands. I just have a lot of slides, so I'm kind of skimming through these. So what I did was I broke this up by grade bands. So you can see whether it is, um, enrollments by pre-K, five through eight, or nine by twelve over the last several years. And then what we're projecting for fiscal year twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we're projecting an average of fifty. If I average it out, we're projecting an average loss of fifteen students each year over the next year. Next slide, Mike.
And another question with, with enrollment projections was about the annual New England, uh, School Council projections we get every year. They usually come out sometime in December. We provided our enrollment data, I think we did that last month. And, uh, we should get that projection, which has been pretty spot-on recently. So, uh, we should have that sometime in the next month. For, it, it's NESDEC, and, and we have it posted on our website. It's New England, I, I can't remember their acronym, but New England School Resource Research, something. No.
Good.
NESDEC report actually looks at building permits and the like, right? It gets into- It's a good report. Further depth, trying to predict the future. Um, so, and I just wanted to add, I'm glad you're really looking at this seriously now, because along with healthcare costs, I think this has been like a slow bleed that's killing districts. Um, I feel like maybe your projections might be a bit optimistic in that it's only about fifteen students a year. Uh, when I looked back to when my daughter was born, which was twenty years ago, basically, uh, since then, we've lost four hundred and four students in twenty years. So that's over twenty students a year, is like the longer average of what we've been losing. And then I think back to like when I first brought her to Brookside, and it was like jam, and, and you know, they were doing a lottery to get in, and it was just a buzzing building. Now you go in there and it's kind of quiet and sleepy, and I think all the buildings are starting to experience that. Um, so I think there's going to be some real, real adjustments happening.
Mike, if you actually go back a couple of slides to where it's the year-over-year enrollment, this is what I pulled in, uh, dating back to fiscal year fifteen is, um, our, our head counts of our students, of all of our students. So if you look at that, you know, we have a blip, we had an uptick in COVID. So what I did was look at the last couple of years and averaged it out. So, uh, I am being, um, I guess, optimistic. Um, but, uh, yeah, so, you know, you could actually look, I wanted to provide that data dating back to two thousand and fifteen. Um, and, uh, where are we at? Next slide. Okay, next slide. So with, I'm averaging out fifteen students, I'm projecting that our enrollment would be one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two students in fiscal year twenty-six, a snapshot of October first next year. Any questions?
No, I, I feel like I don't really have a question, it's more of a comment. I think this kind of goes back to the challenge that we have as a state. We are a state that is known for having an aging population. Um, I was at a conference, uh, last week and sort of blowing people's minds when I was pulling up population information. I mean, as a state, we barely have over half a million people. And, you know, we're already a state that doesn't have a high population in comparison to many other parts of, of the country, and we have an aging population. So this is going to be a challenge that is, it, it's not, it's not going to go away. Um, you know, I think this is information that is also going to be valuable about how it, you know, gets shared once you start talking about budgets, because with fewer students, the cost of education goes up. Um, you know, th- this is part of a big picture issue within our state. You know, we've got a low birth rate for a reason. There's not a lot of young folks around, you know, to, to have kids. So, um, this really just sort of demonstrates the, the challenge as a state, uh, that I think we have when it, when it comes to our, our population and the age of our population.
Yeah, I just talked about, so I'm doing a daily, uh, base of-
Housing and affordability, and hopefully at some point, healthcare, and some of these, um, some of this older generation is going to pass on, and there'll be a, a major shift. And so it just caution us, we're thinking about between twenty to fifteen kids a year, thinking about really downsizing and starting to shutter things. To me, it doesn't feel like the right direction either, if there's one or the other.
Uh, on the slide with the two-year enrollment snapshot by school, uh, of course, I always look at Moretown. And I'm surprised, uh, while other schools that are dropping or barely holding steady, uh, just over the 24 and 25, Moretown jumped by over 10%. Is that kind of, can, can we read anything into it or is it too short a time period?
There are some reasons I think they've seen that population. When, when we look at inter-district choice, they've had a lot of people who've chosen them. I think partly when you look at the geography of it and you look at some of the options, I think it, 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 first of all, it's, it's a wonderful, all of our buildings are wonderful, but they have a very strong staff, uh, and, and parents when we have, I've had to handle requests every year with the principle of inter-district choice of parents who were at their pre-K child there, who wanted to keep them there in kindergarten and we just did not have the space. So I think, you know, there's a variety of reasons. Geographically, it's convenient for people who may be going to work, uh, heading to 89 or Montpelier or someplace else. Uh, I think it covers a wide area. And, and I think people, when they have their child there, they, they get excellent education and they have an excellent staff who really loves their, their children. And they said, that's not unique with just that building, but I think that's part of the, the reasoning why we're seeing a, kind of a higher number there. And, and I'm sorry, the, the, the other piece, that question Dan asked was about public school choice. And that was something we talked about last year at the end of the year. Uh, there's a state law that says we have to offer public school choice. So, uh, we are part of a program because you have to do it in, you have to do it in a legally defensible way, that there's a lottery, that there are, there's timeframes. It, it's not something that, you know, we can just say, oh yes, we'll, we'll take that student in exchange for this student. There is no money changed hands. So when we send students to another school, um, we don't pay tuition to that school. And when we receive another student, we don't pay tuition. So that's why there's some hard limits on those numbers. And then we kind of, I did a deep dive at a, after a question from Dan last year on that one. And, uh, we learned some things at that point, but taking a look at the numbers, um, our numbers for the most part, when, when I've looked for the last five to 10 years, they are, are in and outs have been pretty consistent. They've been generally 10, roughly 10 or under. Uh, one of the questions is where, that Dan had is where are students coming from? And where are they going? And just in general, I, I have one of the reports here and it has names on, which is why I wanted to stop sharing my screen, um, student names. But, uh, so looking at the students we've received in, they've come from Randolph, Spalding, Montpelier, U-32, Twinfield. Uh, they're the main schools. The, the receiving schools, uh, are MMU, CVU, Stowe, Colchester, Spalding, U-32, some, some similar names. Uh, some of the other schools, it's generally students from Waterbury, Waterbury Center who are able to easily get to some of those schools, bigger schools like MMU. Well, MMU's about a thousand more than us, but CVU is, is considerably larger as well as Colchester. Uh, and just offer different programs that we don't offer. So that was some of the reason that we see students go. Uh, some years, we, we actually, we actually received fewer students than were accepted. And again, we also sent less students than were accepted elsewhere and that's family decisions, family dynamics, other kinds of programs like early college that students may get involved in. Uh, but, but it is something that does not impact us that great. I had a meeting today with the MMU superintendent. We were talking about this. Uh, as, as I look at the other schools, um, a lot of those schools that are, that are neighbors, that are closer to 89 have much larger lists than we do. So I think a lot of it is also proximity. Uh, a lot of times those closer, i- if you're in Warren or Bayston, uh, your child's probably not going to get a bus and go over the Roxbury Gap or the App Gap or want to drive to Colchester from, you know, from, from parts of Warren. So I think our geography does play a role in the number of students who come in and out.
Taki, you were asking about the increase of kids in Moretown. Um, and I was just going to offer that the after-school program is really robust. I know parents will choose that one specifically. And I think, you know, thinking about preschool, um, how well the parents are able to have a child be cared for the entire time they're at work, as well as after-school, um, are major factors in what schools people choose, for sure.
Just have a comment on the program at the Warren School. I worked in that program for a long time. I, I ran the after-school program at Warren School and then kindergarten, K-PASS, it's called kindergarten preschool, after-school, was born from our after-school program, from that need of wanting that full day. And it's been successfully going for at least 20 years there. I mean, it is really, really popular in terms of one-stop shopping. So it's unfortunate that it's not everywhere. It used to be greater and we used to have it for Bayston and Waitsfield and for Waitsfield and Waitsfield in the various locations. But it can be done. I mean. Thinking, I mean, having been looking at the survey that we sent out and looking at what people are thinking about with redistricting, that that's an opportunity where you could look at facilities and expand them. Um, and I was, I was the person who started the after-school program at Warren in, in response to, uh, a radio ad I heard about, uh, from the agency, the Human Services, I guess. And I had two kids in school at the time and thought it was a good idea. So, but, you know, it doesn't always have to be in one building. We could, but then again, you're talking about maybe increasing transportation costs because you have to move students from one place or another. But I'm jumping ahead, but I keep thinking about the, the survey responses. Interestingly, parents, a lot of, I saw several responses that said, well, I hope they'll keep school choice so we can send our kids to the closest school and we'll get it to them. It's interesting.
And you brought that up, Bobby, because with the principal team, uh, inter-district choice, I think it, it, we, we have to have inter-district choice. At the same time, how we administer it is, you know, the board is left up to the superintendent. And that's one of the pieces we're discussing because to make classes viable, sometimes we may have to be, we may have to look, we, we have caps on the upper end and like the state, we may have to look at caps on the lower end and start saying no to inter-district choice if it's going to cause an imbalance, too low in classes and, and take away students from a building where, uh, the class won't be viable otherwise. So it's, I mean, you talk about some of the tough decisions. We have some other tough decisions and that's why, that's why we're really starting to take a very close look at the enrollment data.
One of the reasons I had asked about the IDC and why people may choose to go to different schools or come to Harwood is because if we do become a larger district, I'm envisioning maybe inter-district choice also including other towns that we don't have right now. And I'm wondering how do we make us, uh, more appealing to pull in rather than losing more kids to, you know, to Stowe or to MMU or Montpelier or something, depending on how it all merges or not.
The, the faculty is discussing and there are programs that we offer that are unique and, and well-known. Uh, some of our, our art, our music, our theater are known throughout the state. And there are areas that, that, when you start looking at those magnet school type concepts, something that is, is important as we start into the place where we'll have to, we'll have to look at those questions.
We, we all, we used to talk a lot about what were we going to do to improve, to draw in Vermont, people to Vermont. You know, that used to be a conversation that was at a lot of different meetings on different boards and different levels of, you know, how do we make the state more appealing? To your point, Emily, I mean, it, it would, um, you know, we need to do that. I mean, it's seeming like we're kind of all alone in this. How are we going to shore up our schools? It seems like a bigger, broader advertising campaign of some kind or effort of some kind. Yeah, housing. Oh, maybe some housing would be good. I know. It's a lot of things. Um, okay, we're moving on to phase two of this. Yeah, woo, yeah. Education finance system and education funding. Woo-hoo-hoo!
All right. So there's a lot of slides in here. I'm going to go through them quickly, not all of them. Um, but, um, there is also at the end of this slide presentation, a lot of resources that you can go to, look at. Um, and one of the resources, um, actually is, um, a, a cartoon on educational, um, the Vermont Educational Finance System and the Educational Fund and how, um, it, it's funded throughout the state and, and involves, it's, it's a very good explanation in terms of explaining the CLAs and the, um, weighted pupils and how it all, um, works through, because it's a complicated system. So.
So we'll go fast, but please stop or ask questions. A lot of the, before we start getting real heavily into budget and some of those details, we just felt it was a good idea to do a refresher on funding because as a board, this is something we, we do once a year.
So, we know it's complicated, it's challenging, um, but it is shaped by fairness and trying to have equal opportunities for all students across the state. And it also aims to balance decision-making. Um, it has its benefits, but it also has its challenges. Um, the Vermont's educational finance system is, is coupled together with local and state decision-making. So, um, it basically, um, looks at what we need in terms of property taxes, um, what property taxes rates need to be set to fully fund the expenditures of all of the school districts throughout the state. Um, and it is, um, it is dedicated to the statewide educational fund that, that revenue that goes in. Next line. It is actually the total cost for all of the education throughout the state. And those decisions are made locally and by the state. So the local decisions are the approved budgets or the expenses, which we put out for the approved budget, which we vote on in March. And then the state also has some decisions in that fund in terms of any categorical aid. Categorical, categorical aid is English language learner, aid that we get, small schools that we get, um, uh, the, um, our sped ed grant that we get. All of that is made by the, by the state and those decisions. And then any policies that are made, um, to, that impact local budgets. The educational fund is separate from the general fund and it represents about one quarter of the entire state's, uh, spending. And all the approved budgets throughout the state, um, and the, and the approved vote, voters' budgets is actually equal to what's, I always refer to the educational spend. So what we, what is the educational spend? The educational spend is our expenses minus our revenue, which nets our educational spend. So our expenses minus our incoming revenue that we planned, which includes categorical aid, that's our, our educational spend. And that educational spend is what, um, makes up the, throughout the whole state of Vermont, what the educational fund needs to finance. Next line. So the cost of education in fiscal year 26 is $2.4 billion this year. In fiscal year 25, it was $2.3 billion. Again, how do we fund that, that? It's between property taxes and non-property taxes to pay for that educational spend for all the school districts throughout Vermont. I just want to go through this really quickly. Um, the educational fund components, you'll see the education is mostly, um, the fund percentages. Most of the payment is made up by the education payment. It's 80% of the education payment that goes out to all the other school districts. And the rest is made up either transportation aid, um, English language learners, all of those categorical aids. Again, adds to what the cost is that needs to be paid throughout all of the school districts. Um, we talked about weighted pupil. We'll go more into that in later slides. But again, in fiscal year 25, there were categories that were added to the, the pupil and the weights changed and additional categories were added to that weighted pupil count. Uh, next line. I just wanted to share again, and that's almost in all of my budget presentations, when I start doing budget presentations, is what the weights are for each of the students, each of the categories of students. So the pri- two-thirds of the educational fund is primarily made up of homestead and non-homestead. Um, and, and then the rest are made up of most sales tax, um, some other things that are coming in in terms of meals and revenue tax. Any type of tax goes into that educational fund. Next slide. I wanted to be able to share what the projected fiscal year 26 fund educational revenue sources were. Um, it's projected at $2.4 million and then gives you the breakdown of homestead, non-homestead and sales and use tax, and then all the different other categories. And what we're thinking is under that other sources, that childcare tax is most likely under that other sources. But I'll confirm that with, uh, Jake Felton once I hear. Um, again, I just wanted to provide more information in terms of what fiscal year 25's actual revenue sources were for the ed fund and you'll see the breakdown. And then if you go to the next slide, I did a two-year comparison of the ed fund fiscal year 26 projected ed fund versus what, um, was funded in fiscal year 25. So in fiscal year 25, the ed fund was made up of $2.2 million, uh, $2.2 million and fiscal year 26, I'm sorry, billion, $2.2 billion and fiscal year 26 is estimated at $2.4 million. Billion, I keep saying million, billion. The annual tax rates are set filly, fully, um, to support the educational system and the educational spend that is necessary to fund all the school districts throughout Vermont. Um, and again, primarily it's made up of homestead and non-homestead taxes that basically make up 80% of that educational fund. Next line. The tax rates are set by the general assembly, um, the proportion that should be raised from homestead and non-homestead. And you remember, we'll start talking about the yield. That yield is set annually and that's set at the general assembly. The norm, we get in the December 1st tax letter, an estimated yield, so that, I'm always referring to the December 1st tax letter. That's very important. I get the initial estimated yield, but that yields, that estimated yield is where I do the calculation for our, our cost per pupil and plug in all of what our ADMs are and our weighted average. That's estimated. The yield actually is not set until the end of this general assembly session and that's at the end of spring. So I won't know the final yield count. If you recall, over the last couple of years, the yield went up and down and up and down. So, um, we won't know that until the end of spring. But again, I estimate based on what we think it will be prior to December 1st and then December 1st, I'll get that information in the tax letter. I wanted to be able to share the educational, um, finance, um, timeline. Right now, we're all, all the school districts are working on their budgets, developing passes of the budgets. We're all waiting on the December 1st letter that gives us some estimates that helps us in our preliminary projections for our budgets. The budgets then go out for voter approval. Um, and once that voter approval, um, you know, becomes approved or denied, if you remember, um, two years ago, we had several budgets that failed. Um, we're going to push forward and get a good budget this year. Um, but I wanted to be able to provide the timeline in terms of what actually happens next. Again, we're always waiting for that final yield number at the end of spring. Did you want to go over some of this?
Yeah.
No?
Just keep going.
Just go. Okay.
You're on a roll.
Okay. No, that's okay.
You need a break, I can jump in.
No, that's okay. So, oh, sure.
Thank you for this deeper dive because I think it's, um, again, on the survey, what became evident is people really, you know, not knowing what the revenue sources are. And I think that's really helpful. So I appreciate that.
I just want to make a comment back on the, uh, finance timeline slide. Want to do? Yeah. Yeah. Uh, I mean- Yeah, yeah. I mean, when I first showed up in this state, I kept saying, is it really true that our tax rates are determined after we vote on the budget? That's true. I just wanna point out, it's a really crazy system.
About this in depth, um, and I'm still convinced that the UVM researcher that came up with the two point four nine multiplier for the English language learners made a mistake. Uh, but this is now like a data error, not like a judgment mistake, but I'm convinced it's a data error. Uh, but so this is maybe a question to John maybe, or any of you that can kind of speak to it. But so say it costs fifteen thousand dollars to educate a standard pupil. Is it reasonable to think that it costs fifty two thousand five hundred dollars to educate a student who has English as a second language? So it's it's additive, so the two point four nine is added to the one student. So they count as three point four nine students.
Maybe. Uh, I mean, honestly, my first thought, Dan, is like, because those are averages, right? It's not a full apples to apples comparison, but it also, I think, hits on um the economy of scale. And so in smaller districts that have fewer students, that have English language needs. Those costs sort of the same way we talk about per pupil spending here um can be much different than in a school that has a significant number of those students. So I I can see a scenario where that is somewhat true. I don't wanna speak to the exact numbers there. Because of the specificity of those needs and how much a school like ours with low numbers of those students. Um, are able to achieve the economy of scale.
As kind of a typical medium-sized district in our situation, do you think it really costs three and a half times as much money to educate that student? I mean, I'm not trying to hold you on a quote or anything, just, you know, from your gut, what is your gut tell you?
Well, and you can jump in. I can just share, when I first came in twenty twenty two, we had a growing population of EL students. And we had a staff member who was only part-time. And at that point, it really was a financial decision why that was made before us. And and when I spoke with Shannon Leslie, who oversees the person, is our curriculum person. Uh, I had an ethical dilemma with not providing the services that were needed because we were underfunded. We were under educating those students. So it, in that case, I think for us, for those students, it did help us make that decision to, I mean, weights were put in after that decision. So it wasn't, I didn't look at it and say, oh, we have more money, we can spend on that. It really was, the needs were greater than we were providing services for. We were doing those students at this justice of by not providing more robust program. Especially because those students were with our large district, they were concentrated, I would say, at Brookside, Crosser Brook, Harwood. But we still had students in the valley and we had a part-time staff member who was servicing all those students, driving and providing inadequate instruction.
And the other thing I would add to think about is um a student in preschool who's an English English language learner. Just because of age and what we know about language acquisition, um, is likely to need fewer services in some ways than if we have a um fifteen-year-old student who has no English at all, right? So there's, there's a variety of where a student comes in that's an English language learner. And so if you're trying to come into a high school chemistry class with no English at all. The cost of supporting them to be able to access that class is going to be significantly different than a preschooler. Who um is able to participate in a lot more without that intensive language need to. So it, there's so many different sort of entry points for um ELL students that um I think that probably plays into this a lot as well.
You've asked for, you've asked the question before and it's a really good question. I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can find any other information from some folks I know who were involved. See what the rationale was, because it is a good question that I'm, I'd like to know more about.
Your point, Dan, and I think that probably as it hits our district, it's fine, but I imagine a place like Winuski, which has a tremendous amount of English language learners. In one spot where they can have some staff service, you know, multiple needs, it seems like a real windfall.
So this next slide, is this something that that I pulled when we did last year, just saying, we talked about this a lot with the commission work. That we sometimes blame costs on one particular bucket of issues and really it's all three. And in that, I would include education spending, cost drivers, we talked about special ed, but I would also talk about declining enrollment. That's also a driver. And there's not one lever that's gonna fix things. Uh, do we need to look at uh, you know, Act seventy three and and making better use of the resources we have in pooling? Yes, I think so, but my concern with what the state is doing right now with Act seventy three is it's just really, it's kind of a very narrow focus on one thing. That's not gonna generate the cost savings that we're being promised by some politicians. To be real blunt.
Yeah.
It's all right.
And it'll throw us in the chaos that it will ensue us. Okay, where are we at? Carry on. Again, um, I'm sorry, you wanna? Okay, you wanna just, so education, this is the education spending is the cost drivers, personnel costs, CBAs. Um, special education facilities, our deferred maintenance, tuition, these are all cost drivers, enrollments, these are all cost drivers. Um, we can just skim through all the.
Another area, special, I will point out again, special education is a huge cost, not because we don't have teachers and a instructor who's working hard. But because Act one seventy three was put in with really good aims, but it does not provide the, we were not provided the training. The system overhaul that was really needed. And another piece that that, to Emily's point, we are a small state. And we have a lot of what I would call generalists. This is something John and I just talked about two weeks. I came from an area, a very large metropolitan area that had a lot of specialists and specialized services that we don't have access to. So that is one of the challenges we face as as a small state. Again, just special education spending, we, we had our central office, you know, Lisa, Shannon, Mandy, John and I met today. And we spent a lot of our time talking about this very point and what we can do to help bring that curve down. Facilities, again, that's another piece. Yesterday, actually, John, Mandy and I, the Agency of Education, put together their first strategic planning retreat. Uh, and we had, I don't know how many people, probably two hundred people from every district in the, in the state. This is a really good first attempt. I give the agency and the secretary a lot of credit for trying to take some proactive steps. But one of the things, I happened to be in lunch and they invited state legislators, so Peter Conlon, who was on the commission. I had, I had lunch with Peter and some other people and we talked about the fact that, you know, one of the challenges with this, with Act seventy three. Is it envisions restructuring systems, but there is no money in the education uh construction fund to help along that process. So we have buildings that were, small buildings that were bursting at the seams years ago. Uh, but we don't have enough students within range. When I did the calculations, we have about eight students per square mile in Vermont. And and it, so you have to have a large reach and and our buildings just are not located in places where they're not of the scale that allowed this to happen. But we don't have money to remediate that problem.
So um, revenue generation, we're looking at local bus budgets and taxes that are paid by the communities to be able to fund the Educational Fund. Um, again, you can go to the next slide. The educational spending again is the, the educational spend is taking all the approved expenses and approved budgets. Um, by all of the districts, minusing out any revenues and that's the educational spend that the Educational Fund will fund for all the school districts.
Talked about a lot of these pieces before in depth. We'll just kind of go through here. This is the unfunded mandates and it's what I call one of the problems too with our system where we send money to Montpelier. The Education Fund, it's what I call the law of big pots of money. So in years when you're not dealing with budget crunches, you look and think, oh, there's this extra money we can pull from and do this great program that people want and we'll help. Which is very true. And again, we talked about some of those programs today. They're wonderful things, but they do come at a cost. And uh, it stretches the dollars even to a more extreme place. So this is just some of the unfunded mandates that school boards have. Decisions, you know, Brigham, and again, these are kind of some history slides as well. Uh, the homestead tax rate, another complicated one that I think most of our, our, our local residents and neighbors really struggle with. Uh, we talked.
Just go back to that one slide. So I put check marks where we actually have some control over um our, you know, our tax rates and our yield or cost per pupil. So um, our proposed budgets, our revenues and our equalized pupil, we have somewhat um control over. And that's all um to be able to figure out our CLAs in the end. So what's checked off is what we have some control over and then, you know, pre-CLA. But then, once we pull in the pre, the CLA for each of the towns, then that determines the actual tax rate.
We have control over the equalized pupils. It's not a headcount?
I checked it off in terms of, in terms of if we have control over in terms of making sure that our headcounts are being counted correctly. Often, our headcounts, um, for instance, two years ago, our ELLs were not counted correctly and we went back and we fought that. So making sure that data is correct and making sure that we're counting every student in the correct categorical aid. That we then get those extra weights for. So we have some control over that data in terms of making sure it's calculated correctly. Because in the end, it's either a plus or a minus in terms of revenue that comes into the school. So we have somewhat control over that and making sure that those numbers are accurate. And it's key is having that data accurate. And you know, a couple of years ago, if you recall, it was three years ago, there was five views of the ADMs. And making sure that we kept pushing back and saying, it's not accurate, it's not accurate. And if we didn't keep pushing back, we would have lost a lot of money at that point. So we have somewhat of a control over that, making sure that they're counting every one of our students and working with our data managers. To making sure that, you know, vetting those numbers. So that's where I'm checking off that we have a little bit of control over that.
Also, I, I, we do have IT people and I, I mentioned before, Curtis is one of those people that really work with, are part of our data team. And spend a lot of time making sure that enrollment's accurate, that, that's why we do returning student registration every year. Uh, that's why we employ someone who just focuses their day on data and and the money we spend in our IT more than pays for itself in this category.
The next few slides are slides that you've seen in the past. I just put these in here for new board members. And you'll be starting to see these with the next phases, phases of budget presentations that I will be doing. So um, I shared a four-year budget comparison and year over year and then inflation, how it matched with inflation. You can go to the next slide. The next slide is what I will be presenting in all my different scenarios for the three different budget um presentations I'll be doing. Um, this would be a breakdown of all of our expenses by large category. Um, and then once we have a budget, then I produce a line-by-line item for those categories. But I will be coming in two weeks to give a first preliminary view of what I anticipate expenses to be. Again, that would be pre-December first yield. So these numbers, once I start getting these numbers and start plugging it in to be able to fit, funnel down to what our cost per pupil would be. Um, is all very preliminary until I get that December first letter.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Lisa, I have a question for you. Um, could you please, when you um drew up the, the twenty-five, twenty-six expense budget? Could you include sports and the such into its own category for, for us, please?
So I can bring it down um to a detailed level. So I can, um, I can, I'll be able to do that if anybody else wants other specific categories. Right now, these are large buckets, what we call categories, so all salaries, benefits, um, purchase services. But then I could be able to break it down. I won't be able to do that on the first pass. But in pass two and pass three, definitely, you'll have then a breakdown. And if there's additional um views that you would like to see, um, you know, transportation worth versus O and M versus sports. I can do that too. You know, I can be able to focus on that. Just give me an advance notice and I can be able to pull that and have that view.
Thank you. And then one other thing I was thinking about the other day is that, could we also potentially? And you've kind of done this already, but like, I know that we haven't cut any sports alongside all of these other massive cuts that have gone on. And and I, it would be good, I would like to know, maybe that's right on this chart, but I'd like to see it broken down maybe a little further into various, you know, uh, into smaller detail as to what percentage of the math department, what percentage of the music department, art department, sports, et cetera, has, has been affected. Because I'm a strong proponent of that every area that we budget for should be equally cut from. And I know that hasn't happened at this time. And I hope that we can maybe, you know, work together to, to make sure it happens this time. Where if we're making any cuts, that, that we don't spare anybody from the knife because it's painful for every cut. And I don't think that anybody should be spared it, you know, if we're gonna be cutting things.
Uh, the next slide.
He has, to Jonathan's point on getting some deeper data, if there's a spot on here that you would like to see more involved data. We need to know that in the very near future, so we can.
Yeah, it's sports would be the one I mentioned.
Oh, no, I got yours. I'm offering it to other people. Uh, if there's other things they'd like to dive, dive deeper into number-wise, yeah, yeah. So if you have something, reach out and let us know and Lisa will add it to her list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next slide is just showing depicting our revenue. So I was able to display revenue dating back to fiscal year twenty-four and to be able to show what are our different revenues that come in to support. Um, you know, we on average get anywhere like eight million, eight million dollars in terms of revenue coming in. Next slide. So this is the most important slide and this is what you're gonna get sick of looking at and discussing when I bring the scenarios. Is what our actual cost per pupil is and what I would be projecting that the district tax rate pre-CLA would be. So again, you're looking at our total expenses, net our offsetting revenues and forty-one point one million dollars is our educational spend. And that educational spend for all the districts is, comes out of the ed fund. And that ed fund makes up eighty percent of that is made up by paying all of that educational spend for all of the districts. Our calculated weight, again, that calculated weight is important that we're making sure that data is correct, that long-term weighted average. To then to be able to find out what our cost per pupil is. So I would take that, our um, long-term weighted average, which is two thousand six fifty-nine seventy-two. That includes all of those weights for all those different categories of students. We then take that and divide that by our educational spend, what we're asking the ed fund to fund for our district. And we then get a cost per pupil of four, fifteen thousand four eighty-five. Um, I just wanna remind everybody that our excess, this is based on fiscal year twenty twenty-six. I don't know what twenty-sevens will be, but our excess spending threshold is fifteen nine twenty-six. And where our cost. and where our cost per pupil is currently at 15,485. So we're a 400, about $482 away from that excess threshold. And if we exceed that, we are taxed for every $1 over, we're taxed $2. So again, that's current methodology, who knows what it's going to be in the future, but I just wanted to be able to share that. About 200, about 200 is about dollars.
Do we get the new excess threshold with the yield bill? I can't remember when we got that number last year.
Uh, it comes a little bit after, yeah.
Are there a chance that our, um, doing a level service budget would wind up getting us in that place where we came up to that threshold?
We're working on numbers, even though our healthcare number, I'm jumping for joy at 7.3%, which is sad, but other numbers are coming in higher. So I don't have where we're at yet because I'm still working with directors and, and special ed and IT in terms of what I need to still be plugging in and I'm still kind of massaging those numbers and trying to sharpen the pencil. So I don't know yet, it's still very preliminary. Next slide, okay. Uh, so, uh, once we get our district tax rate, then we then apply the CLA. The CLAs come in January for each of the town's preliminary CLAs. And then I apply those preliminary CLAs to our district, district tax rate to be able to see then what the tax implications are for each of the different towns. And you can see, I do normally a, a big spreadsheet based on whether home is valued at 250,000, 350,000 or 450,000 and what the tax implication for each of those towns would be, an increase or a decrease. Next slide. Uh, I just shared some of our tax implications, um, fiscal year '26 versus '25. More town you'll see, um, in Duxbury, there was a, a drop in fiscal year '26, that's because of the, um, the CLA and then also they recently had evaluations done to their appraisals for their homes. Next slide. Just our pre-CLA comparison, our district tax rate over the years, I wanted to be able to share. And then remember that yield at this time was, this is an old slide, at this time was 10,000, but remember the yield actually dropped to 8,000 last year. So the yield fluctuates. I'm always nervous around December when that December 1st number comes out, because by the end of this, the session, the general assembly session, that number can change. So, um, you know. Let's go to the next slide. Just key takeaways, the educational finance system is unique, it's challenging. It's the approval for all of the budgets is the educational spend for each of the school districts. The legislature sets the yield, the end of spring. The Brigham decision paid a big, uh, in 1997, pay, played a big part in terms of educational funding, in terms of equality throughout the state and making sure there's fairness for all the school districts. Tax rates, home test, tax rates vary based on pupil spending. And then the homestead tax rate is, um, the non-homestead tax rate is a hu- uniform tax rate throughout the state of Vermont. Next slide. It is complicated, frustrating, there's benefits and there's challenges. So during this time, you'll normally see me in my office taped to my desk, trying to work through everything. And then the rest are all resources that I plugged in there. What I did not and I neglected to plug in in this presentation is a line item budget. I did share it at one point, I can share it again, I'll plug it into this presentation for the current fiscal year, '26 is a line-by-line, because you normally always have seen big categories, but I can put that link in here as well. But through all of these, this is just numerous resources that you can look at.
I'm, I'm now becoming sort of the school board philosopher, but I, I look, but it, it just occurred to me looking at this, and again, reading those survey responses has got me spinning. You know, we may be violating Brigham right now because we're taking away, so one of the questions people have, and we talk about, you know, equalized spending, but there's also equalized services. So where we had to give up foreign language at a certain level, other schools gained. So it, it created an imbalance and, you know, just seems something that we need to pay attention to.
We won't descend into this discussion, but the one piece that we purposely left out on this was a slide with a big question mark, uh, when Lisa talks about the offsetting revenues, one of those offsetting revenues is federal funds. And while it's not a large percentage of our budget, it still is enough that it would, if we lost those federal funds, it would have a big impact on the services we provide and there would be reductions. So that's, we'll, we'll, we'll gloss over that for now, but that's something that hangs over all of our heads.
One thing I just want to make note of, all federal funds, what we're talking about in terms of this, this is our general fund comes from taxes. Any federal funds or loss of federal funds would definitely impact us because that shift in funds that are paid from federal dollars, how are those, where does that go then? And so that could be, have a major impact us, on us if we lost federal funds. Just as we're experiencing with ARPS or funding. So if, you know, that's still hanging out as an accrual of that $502,000 and I've actually spoke with our auditors, not having a denial letter yet, it's still waiting to be refunded. But if that doesn't get refunded, then that has to be shifted and we have to pay that out of the general fund, so.
Said you'd put in the, um, line item budgets into the presentation? Will you let us know when you've done that or you're just gonna, okay.
Thank you. That's, that's just the tip of the iceberg and away we go. Does anyone have any other questions for Lisa or comments? So many, so many. We'll let it unfold slowly, 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 good stuff. Real funds show up in the other revenue. Yeah, okay.
Each quarter, I normally present other special funds and in that special funds, you'll have all of our title funding, our maintenance reserve funding. We have money coming from small grants, so I do a quarterly report on all of that funding.
Thank you. Uh, I think that concludes our budget discussion for this particular meeting. It's just the beginning. All right, we'll move on, thanks for that. We're gonna, we just have one more little section and that is the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight includes approving the minutes from our 10/22 meeting, approving the warrants from 10/16 for $2,754 and from 10/22 for $325,973.77 for a total of $327,847.77. Do I have a motion to accept the consent?
So moving.
First from JB, a second from Pam, all those in favor say aye, aye. Okay. All right, so not forget your homework, we want to know what you really care about. I appreciated yours, Dan, but I want you to dial in on the here and the now, the right, yeah, just the right now, like we, we all, you know, there's so much to all of this, it's a little mind-boggling. But just having an idea of where everyone in this room and in our board, including Jonathan, who's in another room, where, where you stand on what your priorities are, that will really help us in our leadership and help us have a better conversation at our next meeting. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I, I, I kind of said it already, but I, I, I just want to ensure that if we do have to make cuts again, which, you know, we're not sure yet, of course, that we use, that we apply pressure everywhere and not just in places that is easy. Everything that we have already funded over the years was important to us enough to put it into the budget and now that we have to take it out, there should be a recognition that all of those things are important, whether it be foreign language or sports or art or whatever. I think we need to be very, very judicious about making sure that nothing is left unturned and that we don't steal from one category repeatedly while leaving other categories unscathed. That is becoming, becoming a real blister on me and I really want to address that this time around so that we don't continue to lose, like, the nurse situation where if we had, if we had done a little better job spreading that pain around the district, we might have not have had to have put additional stresses on our existing nurses as we have. Even if that is working out fairly decently, I think it, we could all agree that it was better when we didn't have to share them. So that's the kind of thing I'm more interested in than anything. I understand none of these cuts are fun, nobody wants to see anybody lose their job or their recreation or their, their passion as students. But I think we can't, we can't have any special categories that don't, that aren't affected by this. And I think we just need to be very careful about letting that happen.
You, um, we're going to hear from Emily.
So as a, as a new board member, um, this is my first time going into thinking about budgets and, and, and sort of how we're going to, to tackle, everything is just going to cost us more. I think an important thing for those of us that are new board members that I, I would find helpful is sort of understanding some areas that are like, here are the things that are like a non-negotiable, they can't be cut. These are not options, because I think it will help, um, understanding the areas where we do have to make those choices and then, and then the why. Because I, I think hearing other board members' concerns, I think it's also important to understand the limitations of what we can and we can't even consider for cuts.
Great point, and I think we can dial in on some of that and, and break them out as to what are the have-tos. And thank you, Jonathan, for your comments there and we, I mean, this is, everybody at this table has their own opinions and ideas and thoughts about how we're going to wade into this and figure it out this time around. This is never easy, this is going to be harder, I'm sure, than it was last year. And I think all of our opinions matter, so I, I hope that everyone will dig deep to really figure out what's important to you. And with that, I will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to forward out the line item budget to the email, to the board, but then I'll also plug, plug it, plug it into the presentation.